Rhonda. Okay, Rhonda, you're ready to begin. Okay, all right. Okay, let's, let's begin. This is the regular, this is a regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on August 25th, 2021 and 7:30 PM. Pursuant to section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on August 25th, August 20th, 2021, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topic, The Times, and was filed with Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are on, are to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, Times, to Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notice has been, notice, notices have also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay. Let's begin. I have to get to the agenda here, sorry. All right, I guess Claudia, do you want to call the roll?
Ms. Coulson? Mr. Davich? Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Ms. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the first item of the minutes, and this is the minutes from a special meeting on November 20, November 4th, 2020. It was included in your packages. Does anybody have any comments, questions, clarifications, or if not, would somebody like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the minute though. Can I do that?
Okay. Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Thank you. Claudia?
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have three resolutions this evening. The first is 44 Wheat Shift Lane Block 7601 Lot 23 in the R5 Zone, and its case number is Z21-006. Again, the resolution has been included in your packet. If there are no questions, or if there are questions, let's discuss them. If not, if somebody'd like to make a motion.
Board members, I wanted to suggest one revision. I had listed Donna as a recused, but she reminded me that she had been participating, but then due to technical problems, she couldn't cast her vote. So I would suggest that I add something to the resolution indicating that. So it's clear that she wasn't recused. It was just a, a technical problem that prevented her from voting.
Okay.
That's acceptable to everyone.
Thanks.
I'm comfortable with it. If anybody has any concerns, let's discuss them. Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I move approval.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Second, anyone?
I would second it, but I was not there.
Well, that's a good reason not to second.
That means there's nobody else on the, on the list that can second it either, except you, Steve.
Can you second it, George?
Yes, Stein second.
Okay.
No, 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 couldn't, no, no.
All right, then, then I'll second it.
Okay.
Great.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the second resolution, 42 Chestnut Street, Lot 30.01 Lot 21 in the R4 Zone, and its case Z21-052. Once again, it's in your packet. Oh, I missed one. I'm sorry. Well, I took it a little out of order, but let's just do this and we'll go back. Questions, comments? If not, motion would be nice.
I'll, I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Claudia?
So we're doing 42 Chestnut, correct?
Yes, we are. I'm sorry. I, I missed the other one.
That's okay. Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes?
Yes, we're done.
Okay. Okay, let's go back now to 195 South Harrison Street, Lot 11001 Lot 25 in the R5 Zone, and its case Z21-047. The resolution's in your packet, and somebody like to discuss it or make a motion?
A, a quick question. Did you say 195 or 193?
Oh, I'm sorry, 193. 193 South Harrison. I have a very small second monitor here, so doing the best I can.
I move approval, Steve.
Thank you. Second, anyone?
I will second.
Okay.
Stein second.
Okay, Claudia?
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first hearing of the evening is 269 South Harrison Street, Lot 11002 Lot 51 in the E1 Zone. It's case Z21-040. This was previously distributed at the prior meeting, so you should have everything you need. Is, I see the applicant is here. Hello, good evening.
Mr. Pyle, and I think we need to bring Jim Kyle over if Claudia already has, excuse me.
Okay.
You're muted, muted, Mr. Uh.
There you go. Okay. All right. I think first, Derek, you need to be sworn in.
Yes. Mr. Bridger, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
One quick question, excuse me. Karen, are all the notices in place?
They are. The board took jurisdiction of this at a previous meeting. It was carried. So everything is in order.
Good, good. And, all right, I guess we should swear the piles in.
Oh, yeah, and.
And, and Jim Pyle.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Pyle, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
We do.
We do.
All right.
You gotta get me too, Karen, sorry.
I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't see you.
Sorry.
Do you swear from your testimony will be truthful this evening, Mr. Kyle?
I do.
Thank you.
Hey.
Do you want to begin with Derek, Steve?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. Molly Pyle is the owner of 269 South Harrison Street and seeking C1 and C2 variances to permit the development of parking areas within the front and side yard setbacks in exception to ordinance requirements. The property is located in the E1 Zone in the former Princeton Township land use ordinance. It's subject to 10B, A246, 253, and 255. The lot is non-compliant with respect to the required 21,780 square foot lot area. The existing's 11,550 square feet. It's also not complying with respect to the required 100-foot lot width, whereas the existing is 75 feet, and the subject property itself is not complying with respect to the right side yard setback requirement's 15. The existing's 9.75. And the side parking setback is 15, and the existing is 1 foot. The applicant is proposing to expand the parking area space along the right side property line and a circular driveway, which will also serve as a parking area as proposed in the front yard. Those project will result in more than 400 square feet of net new and previous coverage, and a stormwater management plan will be required. The following variances are required. The required front yard setback, parking setback is 25 feet. The proposed is 10 feet 5 inches of the front or the side yard setback, excuse me. The front parking setback is 3 feet from the side. I, I it should be the front parking setback requirement's 25 feet, and the proposed is 10.5, and the side parking is 3 feet, whereas the existing is 1, the proposed is 1 foot. And I note that the the Rose County Road, it would probably require approval from Mercer County, and they requested C1 and C2 criteria variances. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay, Mr. Pyle, please begin.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
Garbled.
It's a little garbled.
Yeah.
All right, I'll speak slowly, and I'm just gonna look at Jim, can add his particular thoughts. Is that right, Jim?
I can't understand you.
Yeah, I'm having trouble also.
I'd like to start, and then Jim Kyle will follow unless he wishes to go first. I can't hear me.
Yeah, you know what it is, Tom? Your, your, your microphone connection is not good. It's all, it's all kind of staticky and garbled. I don't know, maybe if you want to try and log out, log back in.
Okay. All right, bear with me. I will be right back.
And Derek, while, while we're waiting for Tom to come back on, I think the, the side yard setback existing is a foot. I think you're right there, but I think the proposed is 3. You're, you're on mute, Derek.
Sorry, Jim, thank you. You are correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's a little less of a variance than what it currently is.
Derek, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
You said that if this is a, if we approve this, it still has to go to the county?
No, they just have to approve the, the road opening. It would be actual cutting the curb for the other end of the horseshoe driveway.
And is that usually an automatic type of approval, or?
I believe so. We don't get that many requests because we don't have that many county roads in town, but I think Mr. Pyle has had conversations with the county.
I think Mr. Pyle's is back on, but I don't see him. I saw a little up there. They are.
He's gone now, yeah.
Yep, they're getting there, getting closer.
On mute, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Can't see me, but, okay, let me start the video. Okay.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, we're back. How's it sound?
Good, I fixed it.
Much clearer.
May I share the screen and present off of my PowerPoint?
Sure.
All right. So, see if I can do this correctly. Do you see the first page of my presentation at the moment?
Who has to, who has to allow the screen sharing?
Everybody's allow, all the panelists.
All right.
Uh, let's see.
Entire screen, okay.
I don't, I don't know how to, oh, let's see. I don't know how to do that, to be honest with you. What do, what do I do to allow that?
No, I already did.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah, do it again. Share, please. Share the audio. Sure. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not being enabled here to share the screen.
Did you click on the little green box in the bottom of the screen?
Green box in the bottom of the screen.
Well, mine is on the bottom.
Yeah.
Says share screen?
Yes. Wow. Well, that's a big deficit.
There you go.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, great. There we go.
Good.
There we go. Okay. Slideshow. So, can you see the slideshow now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so welcome to the new home here, 269 South Harrison Street, and we appreciate the chance to visit with you tonight and describe what we're up to, which is, in summary, a driveway project for three purposes. One is to improve safety, the other accessibility, and third is capacity on this very constricted lot. We wish to do so by expanding an existing single lane driveway and extending from that narrow single lane driveway, a U-shaped curve that will allow egress onto Harrison Street front first. We are requesting variances of C1 and C2 due to the pre-existing non-conforming nature of the lot, the lack of street alternatives, and the setback requirements which are impossible to meet. And in this second picture below, you can see the general outline of the project. Moving to page three, this property is located in an E1 Zone right here, which is different than the R zones that you would see up and down the rest of Harrison Street. Right across the street from the Butler Track, which is soon to become a parking lot. They were over there today repaving and relining those streets. Our purposes in buying this house is for us as an elder couple to age in place in Princeton and reduce our running costs. I've been here since 1971, and my wife Molly has been with me since we've been married in 1981. And we also, in addition to wishing to age in place, wish also to create a permanent housing option for our disabled son. We could talk more about that if it's relevant. But he's, he's in a, an affordable housing rental unit at the moment, and we wish to secure his permanent housing in this familiar neighborhood. The project purpose is indeed to improve driveway safety and logistics, to facilitate service vehicle access to the property, and to improve the onsite parking capability. The three sets of problems that are facing us now. The first is the capacity. Here's a picture of our two cars present on the existing driveway. As you can see, both cannot fit on it. As well as the inability to receive service vehicles. When two service vehicles are present, one inevitably has to stick into this busy road. So this is a, a capacity issue. The property directly in front of our property is actually an illegal parking zone due to the fact that the center line of the road, which is off-center, return returns to center right in front of our property. So it's illegal to park in front of our house. Are you hearing me all right in the presentation?
Yes.
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 Good. In terms of the logistics on the property, we have 35 feet of frontage from the house to the, to the sidewalk. And I've, I've tested how to do turning within perhaps a 400-foot pad that could be used as a K-turn, and I found in this particular car, this Honda Civic, insufficient space to affect a full frontal entrance into Harrison Street. And most importantly is the safety issue. This street, as we all know, is very heavily traveled. It's essentially a secondary trunk route from Route 1 to Route 206, and we have heavy, very heavy traffic frequently on this road. This is just a glimpse of some of the heavy traffic that is routinely in front of our place into which we have to back when we enter the street. These are issues not unfamiliar from you, from the presentation last week of 193 South Harrison Street. According to the Princeton Traffic Bureau, this is a study that was done by the police, and this shows that on average, during the period of this study, there are about 2,000 cars that pass by this house every day, of which 75% are speeding. And of those speeding, 75% of the speeders are averaging 40 miles an hour. So this road is a little bit dangerous. Mr. Kyle and I were talking today, and he pointed me to a DOT traffic study, which I looked up just before meeting, which showed that on one particular day, May 2nd, 2019, 13,000 vehicles were going up and down Harrison Street on that particular day. The consequences of 40 mile an hour crash are serious, according to the National Traffic Safety Bureau. You can see the list of serious injuries that can result, as well as serious crash. So we're very mindful and concerned about that safety issue. On the block where we live, from Hartley on up to Sycamore, in that block, in the last three years, according to Princeton Traffic Bureau, there have been 12 accidents requiring police assistance, including this very one on, in January, when I was raking the front lawn of this property. A UPS truck in the background there was parked against the road and had its tires canted back into the road, and the car next to it crashed into the front tire, and this was the upshot of that 12th accident in, in three years. This is a challenging property, and I want to thank Mr. Bridger and the team at the zoning board. They've been very helpful to help me work this through, and they were also very candid. We didn't have a lot of options, as we discussed at the very beginning, Mr. Bridger has laid out some of these issues. And these are the constraints that are, we are facing on this property. Just to look at the survey, this is the top level of the survey, and I'll show you the dimensions of this project. Here is a detail of the survey. You can see that from the property lines, the 34 and a half foot distance to the house, these are the property lines and the variance, the the setbacks, the red line is the property line, and the yellow lines indicate the setback requirement. So you can see we're already pretty tightly constrained by the position, the pre-existing position of the house. This is a rendering of what the setback lines look like on the survey detail. The red strip, you can see the side, the front walk to the stoop and the front door is indicated in in the pinkish color. This is what I estimate the 20 by 20 pad would look like, which is to say that where we'd implement that, it would be set rather down the driveway, which, as I illustrated before, makes it difficult to actually affect a complete head-first entry into Harrison Street as we intend. So we're proposing this project, which is to say a circular drive that will allow ingress on the existing pad, but egress on a second pad further down the road and a circular driveway that would be calibrated to be about 13 feet wide, so that cars can, a car can easily, or a truck for that matter, can easily get on and off the property safely into Harrison Street. These are the dimensions done to scale. 1 inch equals 10 feet, and that's how the property looks now. This is how it would look by the plan that we are proposing. We are aware of the impermeable surfacing requirement, and thus we envision doing a stormwater remediation project. I'd originally thought that we could do it here, right in the, in the U of the U shape, right along the sidewalk. In fact, I thought this might be even a model project. However, we have pipes that come underneath here, sewer water and gas. So I don't think this is going to work because we have to dig a little bit deep, given the 6% slope that we have on the property. So actually, I'm liking better the alternative bio-retention site along the side of the property as indicated. We're taking guidance from this stormwater planning guide from Rutgers, and this has given me enough data to help me work, or enough in, guidance to help me work through what I think are the correct calculations necessary to determine first the existing impervious cover, second, the new impervious cover, third, the total gallons of water capacity needed for a rain garden, and then fourth, the drainage area needed to handle the worst-case storm as indicated in the, in the guidelines. Now, these are my amateur calculations, although they're, I think, pretty well scripted from the Rutgers guidance. But this is just to get started. We fully intend to address the stormwater management issue. And with your guidance, we will do so. As to the traffic, Thomas Murray, Sergeant at the Traffic Bureau, came over and he did a review of our situation and our plans. He told us what I think we already know, which is that Harrison, South Harrison Street is one of the top 10 locales for accidents in town, mostly because people are not paying attention, but nevertheless, his conclusion is that South Harrison Street will only get busier. And that's actually already true in two respects. The parking garage that the university is building over at Fitz Randolph, according to the study from the university that I recently read, is proposing to increase the traffic along Hartley at least by 20%, much of, some of which will be turning up Harrison and coming in front of the house. So that's one pressure point. Whoops, sorry. And the other pressure point is the recent announcement of the university to develop or to repave the Butler Track and use that during the fall as additional parking for administration vehicles and staff. So there's going to be a lot more traffic in our own area. We talked about the part of Harrison Street on which we live being a catty road, and that is the case. We've applied for and received permission to do a curb cut according to the details of the project. And this was signed up on May 6th by Inspector James Carroll, who's responsible for the Northern region of Mercer County Department of Transportation. We've also had the watershed come over and survey the property. Corey Kaiser, their stormwater specialist, gave us some opinions about the soil, water, the flow, the compositions, and helped us with the topographical maps and other considerations. So we are consulting with her for guidance as we go through the stormwater management process. We have reached out to the neighbors as required. Our neighbors within the 200-foot radius all seem to be okay with the project. I don't, I've not heard any opposition from the immediately adjacent neighbors. We have several U-shaped driveways in our neighborhood. As it happens, one is just up Harrison Street directly across from Sycamore. And then one is catty corner to the back of our property over on Hartley, and then Hartley Avenue on the other side of Harrison has several other circuit or driveways. So what we're proposing, I suppose, is not new to the neighborhood. We'd like to suggest, Molly and me, that this has several benefits. For the property, it improves the vehicular and the pedestrian safety, and I should emphasize pedestrian because we have a fair number of walkers and runners coming up and down our side of the street as they head down to the tow path. This provides for easier logistics on this crowded property. It improves the parking capacity, and we are intending fully to introduce a new stormwater management system consistent with the new recent regulations that have been adopted by the township. In terms of zoning, we'd like to suggest that this advances the purposes of the zoning code. We can get into those details in a minute, but I think it does no harm, and indeed allows some senior citizens to age in place and promotes safety and public good in those regards. We think the benefits outweigh the detriments, and that there's no substantial impairment. We think the benefits outweigh the detriments and that there's no substantial impairment to the zoning intent. In other words, this promotes public health and safety. It serves the residents of various ages and capacities. It uses the land efficiently and it promotes flood control. We are aware that this kind of a project has many complexities, and so we're trying to proceed in a logical manner. We very much appreciate the guidance and help so far provided by Mr. Bridger and Miss Sebelas on the zoning team. And however, I also have to note that this is an expensive process. We're already a couple of thousand dollars into this process, and we are very much hoping that we can get affirmative guidance here so we can proceed stepwise through this and thus be relatively assured that the monies we probably are going to have to spend along the way here will result in the outcome that we all see. So Mr. Kyle is already engaged as our planner. I appreciate his participation tonight. As we move through this, I'm expecting that we're going to have to have some, you will advise us, but in terms of the stormwater management, there may have to be some kind of stamp plans or whatever. And we have some people in mind for that. As landscape architects, we fully expect to do some sophisticated landscaping so to disguise this project as best we can without interfering with the sightlines to the street for the traffic. We are talking, we also have stormwater management design expertise that we hope can tap. And then in terms of the actual plants, and if we go with the rain garden option, we expect to work with Jeff Boundley up at Boundley Nurseries. So in conclusion, we are a longtime couple, I from nineteen seventy one and my wife since we were, we moved here in nineteen ninety, which together as a couple back in the early nineties. And then we're seeking to downsize in place so as to reduce our running costs and stay in the area. And then also to ultimately provide a secure future boat in the neighborhood for our disabled son. These variances are sought for driveway safety, accessibility and capacity improvement. And we think the benefits outweigh the detriments, both to the in terms of property improvement and zoning interpretation. So that concludes my portion of the presentation, and thank you for your consideration. I hope we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Pyle, would you like us to mark this as an exhibit then? I think you had twenty eight slides. Is that correct?
Yes, and I I just included these others. I could send this to you, but I put these details in the back in case we needed to discuss our perspective on these. But yes, I'd be happy.
So we'll include this art.
Okay. All right, good. Well, that did that seemed to work out. So over to the chairman.
Well, I have, can I ask, I just one, one question, Mr. Pyle? Are you going to use the new circular driveway for overnight parking? Or is this purely going to be turnaround and service vehicles when they're there?
The, I I've designed the the U-shaped driveway going to be squared off at the top, and that could, so it would indeed have two vehicles on it, the ones that we own overnight, since we're not able to park them on the street.
Oh, so we, excuse me, you are going to park them in this circular drive at night?
In the circular drive, no, we intend to widen the existing one lane into two, so the two vehicles can be next to each other there. And then if need be, yes, I suppose if my daughter or granddaughter, or if a service worker or a social worker has to be overnight, yes, I'd have to park them on the property because they can't park on the street in front of our house.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that's, that's a, thank you for showing that slide. There is, therein lies the design.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do any other board members have any questions, Michael?
Yeah. Accepting your, you know, your testimony and your, the reasons, I understand that. Either in your conversations with Mr. Bridger or independently, did you look at the possibility it would take a variant still, but putting in the second driveway on the south side and taking it past the house. A lot of properties on this street utilize the rear of their very long properties. So I wanted to know if you have considered that as a possibility and then taking out the existing driveway completely.
We haven't considered that. We did consider as a potential architect with whom we were talking, did make mention that running it along the front yard and then taking it along the side and all the way in the back. That strikes me as not very efficient land use. It would in pre-increase the impervious cover and it would be a detriment, I think, to the aesthetics of the side and backyard, which are one of the great features of this house. The front yard is a little aesthetic value to the homeowner in that it's not somebody, we're not sitting on the front lawn and such, but the backyard, which abuts up against the university's vacant land between broad, at Broadmead is one of the distinctive features. It's a park-like setting in the back of the yard, and we wish to complement that and not to encroach upon that with paving or further structures. If I may just add one more point.
Sure.
I'm aware that this is increasingly impervious cover, which is unfortunate, but necessary. And it, however, I think this increases the impervious cover in the minimum, in the, in the most minimum way so as to solve our safety problem as, but not to increase runoff or encroach on the more pastoral aspect of the property and the properties around it.
On the right side, it's very tight. We can put a car in on the right side. And on the left, the house already have a porch there. And it's also making going in there is a bit tight because the porch was there already before. So it's kind of very difficult to get car in as well.
Well, okay, I, I think there, there is enough from, from the drawings and the measurements to do it, I think. On that option, and you know, I'm just asking the questions, if that was done, you would take out the existent asphalt for the existing driveway, and you would not have the asphalt curving in front of the house. So I'm not sure that it's a great increase if
So
that was done. So I, I'm, I'm, you know.
This property is a hundred, this property is a hundred and fifty feet long, seventy five feet wide. So it's not as long as you might think. And what I think you're suggesting is that we would run a side, a extended driveway that would at least be twice the length of the current driveway and then have to have a turnaround in the back. So I do think it's going to it doesn't reduce the impervious covered. I believe it will increase it and it will impact the aesthetics of the backyard, not only for us, but for the neighbors.
Well, I, I wasn't suggesting if you interpreted that that you, it would be a circular turnaround in the back. It might be a K turn. So I don't want you to assume that is what I'm saying.
A circular, but it, it would have to be someplace where the car can turn around in the back. That's true. Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
But bear, bear in mind.
You could also fit, if I could, you could also fit, it would be long enough when you had visitors, when you had trucks, whatever, to fit those vehicles alongside or in that new driveway. That's the concept.
I, I appreciate that and I appreciate your thought. I'm not myself persuaded that it improves the flow on the, on and off the property, particularly for the service vehicles. So the challenge is then that people get backed up on the other side. And in winter or in storm weather and whatnot, it's not easy when you have two or three cars backed up in the way along a driveways you're proposing. It doesn't easily enable us to get off the property. So the intention here with the U-shaped driveway, albeit in the front yard, is to have easy access and safe access into the busy street. I might also add that it's to take up the old driveway and lay a new driveway is going to increase the cost of this project. And we're trying very hard to manage the costs here. So then to, to put more money, frankly, into my son's special needs trust. I'm aware that we have redevelopment costs associated with our plans here, but we do want to be, try to be very efficient with the way we use the money because as for all of us, but I think especially in my son's case, every dollar counts because that will, but we intend for him to have more money in a special needs trust rather than in more paving on the property.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I'd like to make a comment. The, Michael, I think your suggestion is actually very good. Because the way it's presented now, there's going to be basically a, the potential for a whole front yard of cars and trucks. And, you know, very little, very little left of the planted area in the front. Even if the driveway extended back beyond the house and there was a very small turnaround in front of the house, just a place to back out, make a K turn and go out. I think it, I think it would improve the aesthetics of the front of the house quite a bit over what may happen now.
I, I have a question about the garage. Is it not possible for you to park one car in the garage so you don't have multiple cars stacked up visible?
Yeah, it is possible. The garage was built in nineteen fifty and it's a very tight fit built then for smaller cars of, of more narrow gauge and we will have an issue easily getting in and out. Remember, it's about two older citizens and then a disabled citizen are trying to get on and off this property or have their service vehicles get on off the property easily. So in the middle of rain or, or winter in a snowstorm, we want to try to enable easy flow of the vehicles on or off the property. We don't have the parking in the front and the moment there's a service vehicle behind a family car, when the family car has to get out, then two and three people have to go out and move cars around and so on. We're hoping to avoid that in our, in our old age for more convenience.
The garage is so small that even my small car couldn't even open my door. And on the right side, we have not enough land to improve to make it bigger. So it's impossible to do it on the garage side.
Do, do you have any plans to convert the garage for interior space?
That, we don't at the moment, but given the footprint of the property and given the coverage ratios that we all have to abide when we think about further development. Turning that into a bedroom, for instance, is a possibility down the road. And it's another reason I frankly would like to preserve that option because as elders, if we have to be on the first floor for whatever needs we have, rather than going upstairs, that would be a benefit. It also affords perhaps the next owner an option without taking, by, by putting down the driveway as we're doing, we're obviously increasing the coverage ratios, but we're still well below the permissible limits for this particular property. But adding more coverage in the back with the garage and so on, that reduces the coverage ratios and constricts the possibilities for the future, either for us or whomever may have the property after us.
Can I ask you a question, sir? I'm looking at your executive summary. It's, I guess, your second slide. Are you planning on doing anything to the, anything different with the existing driveway? Are you eliminating any of it or are you still leaving it?
Yes, so coming back, bring this, okay, so if we could advance, whoever has my presentation or advance the slides down to the drawings and you'll see that in the widening of the driveway, we're proposing, there we go, right there, one more, one more. Sorry, two more, right there. Good. So here you can see that the blue area is imagined to be the new coverage to be included, whereas the red area in the lower left-hand corner of the drawing is area now that we would revert to grass, revert to permeable, permeable cover. So yes, there is a portion of this driveway that we would take out so as to try to minimize the impervious cover of the whole project.
So the, all of the blue in front of the house.
Yes.
Which is more than just a U shape is planned to be paved.
Yes. Now notice that the U shape is the, the travel channel, as I estimate, and this is I will, I will need further advice on this, I presume, from a consulting engineer. But my research indicates that about thirteen feet is needed in the travel channel of the U so that a car can easily make the turn or indeed even a longer service vehicle. So that is why the the, the, the inside, from the inside arc directly to the the indicated stone walk, that's thirteen feet. And that is, you can imagine the channel all the way through there. So that's the main portion of this project. And then I've imagined a squared office that it might be better for the aesthetics, but I am open to suggestions about the additional impervious.
Okay, so the squared off, is it necessary for the smooth operation of the driveway?
Well.
Or you didn't want to regret, you didn't want to keep that grassed or?
So in the lower right portion of the blue, where you see the angled indicators, thirteen feet, there's space over there in case you have one or two cars parked in the old driveway and then somebody else has to get up and to the front door. If there's another vehicle here, so we're not trying to create a parking lot per se in front of the house, but given the lack of parking on the street and the danger of getting out or off the street, I just imagine that I need a thirteen foot channel, it seems, and I'll confirm that with a professional designer, a consulting engineer to get through the U shape of the intended driveway.
Right, but if I'm looking at, and if I'm looking at the, on your drawing, the lower right blue portion, the portion that you have squared off, that's a bit beyond thirteen.
That's right. That's right. And you could park a car in there. That's right. So imagine, I mean, if it's a Thanksgiving weekend or whatnot, and a relative comes to visit, where am I going to put that person?
So you envision then parking a lot of parking. So you envision parking in the original area except for that small triangular area that you're going to cut off existing driveway plus the U.
Well, we could park in the U. That's true. I'm just trying to.
Or that squared off part of the U.
Yeah, well, as I designed this concept, I'm thinking long term as to what is the future of the road? And what's the future use of the house and who's going to be using the house? And the investment that has to be made in doing all this work. So the, I was partly motivated by the idea that this could be one and done. Let's just do this all because the, the, whoever follows us in this house is going to have to be doing something like this eventually. And the traffic on Harrison Street is not decreasing, it's increasing. And partly because of initiatives taken elsewhere around town, according to Sergeant Murray. Laudable as they are, but they do have a consequence on this particular road. The traffic is going to be increasing. So I'm just trying to figure out what is the most practical and safest way to have safety, accessibility and capacity, given I can't move the house itself, unfortunately.
I have one more question, sir, quickly. You, I think your application included indication that in front of your house, there's not adequate space for parking for, for parking a car directly in front of the house.
Actually, it's not permitted. It's illegal to park in front of our house, according to Sergeant Murray.
Okay, if you, i- is that because not enough space? Or is that because there's no parking sign that I'm not seeing or?
There is no, there's. There is no, there's true that I don't Sergeant Murray indicated that the there should be a no parking from here to the corner on this on the north side of our apron there. But because it's, as you can see, the center line reversed to center, it's off center for most of Harrison Street to enable parking above our place, but it reversed to center right in front of our place. And so vehicles parked in front of our house, even if they're illegal, are very dangerously positioned because of the traffic that is coming down that street.
Does anyone park there?
Well, sometimes the service vehicles do, yeah, the vendors park there. And Sergeant Murray said to me, look, we don't like that. We're not going to come running after you with tickets, but that shouldn't be there. That's an illegal parking in front of that house. Well, yeah, the accident that occurred just above us in January that I've pictured in one of the previous slides was just such a case where somebody, the UPS truck was, there it is right there, was doing a delivery and albeit in a in a parking lane, but had his front wheels canted into the road and a careless driver hit the wheels. And when I'm getting in and out of my car, when I'm parking above in the lane, there's about two feet that I'm, I mean, I can't get into my car unless I have a clear lane of traffic ahead of me because these cars come down that road at forty miles an hour and they're within two feet of the parked cars. So I'm I'm a little bit nervous and especially for my wife getting in and or older people getting in and out of their cars when parked on the street and especially if they're parked in front of our house.
Do you ever back out of your drive? I mean, I gather you back out of your drive where when you have.
Yes, I have to do now. Yes, and so it's backing into the southbound lane is one thing. When you have to cross and go north to the shopping center, we have to cross the lane and then be heading north. So at four o'clock in the afternoon to six, it's rush hour, so it might take ten minutes to do that. But more importantly, on a snowy day, when a trailer truck is coming down at forty miles an hour on the road, that's a nerve wracking experience. And I'm just, you know, in our seventies, I don't want to get in dim light with bad eyesight or whatever the reason. This most important thing is to be able to get into the street easily face first instead of back first, it seems to me.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the board? Okay, Mr. Pyle, would you like, do you have another witness?
Yeah, Jim Kyle is a planner and I think he's known to you good folks. And I've invited him to join the presentation to comment on some of the legal aspects of the variance request and he might have some other thoughts about some of the safety issues of which we're speaking.
Okay.
Evening, everybody. Mr. Chairman. So I was retained by Mr. Pyle and his wife to look at the planning issues associated with this. I've been out to the site a couple of times. We've discussed Mr. Pyle's plans, have also reviewed those as well as the zoning ordinance and the master plan as well as Mr. Bridger's memo. So this, as we've talked about, this property is undersized for the zone. It's a little odd, it's a single family home in the E one zone. You saw from the zoning map that the homes that are to the north are actually in the residential district. So the requirements here, this lot is about half the size that's required. That's an existing nonconforming condition. It's also a little substandard as to width at seventy five feet versus a hundred. And then there are some existing nonconforming conditions related to the parking setback. Fifteen feet is is required and we have a foot today. And really, the two variances that are required for this application to be approved are for the side yard parking setback. Fifteen feet is what's required and we're proposing three. And I would note currently that driveway is within about a foot of the property line as it angles to the north, so we would be reducing that encroachment and then holding the line at three feet for a portion of the driveway. And then also the front yard parking setback, twenty five feet is what's required and we have ten feet, five inches. So I think in in this case, these really both qualify as both C one and C two variances. I think on the C one side, it's really the existing configuration of the dwelling related to the to and related to the property with. And also the the garage essentially establishes the location of the driveway and access to the structure. So you know, in the future, perhaps that garage can be converted, but as it is today, it does function as a garage. You know, it's not infrequent that people would come in, access the garage with groceries and parcels, things like that. So really, the the location of the garage today is what kind of determines where the driveway is is going to need to be for now. I think on the C two side, I think there are purposes in municipal land you saw that would be promoted here. The first is purpose A to promote the public health, safety and general welfare. Also purpose H to promote the free flow of traffic. So the variance here in this case would allow for construction of this additional means to pull a car straight or rather head out of the driveway to access South Harrison Street. We think that's a better safety option, both for the occupants of the dwelling as well as to the public. The loop driveway in this case would allow cars to enter by pulling straightforward out and and exiting. And it's going to provide better visibility for the driver to look easily rather than, you know, be backing up, trying to look left and right. You know, trying to figure out if there's pedestrians, as Mr. Powell noted and as I've seen the many times I've been on South Harrison Street, there are a lot of walkers. A lot of people go down to the canal path for recreation. So you have a lot of people walking up and down this side of the street. Mr. Powell also talked to someone about the traffic. We did look at the DOT data, you know, about thirteen thousand cars daily go up and down South Harrison Street in both directions. So the traffic here is pretty significant. This is a major connector, as we all know, out to Route One into the municipality. The other situation here is that the driveway is relatively close to the intersection with Hartley. That's a signalized intersection. You know, during rush hour, it's not uncommon for that traffic signal to back up, you know, pretty significantly. You would have, you could have ten, twelve cars and you have traffic stopped in front of the house waiting. So imagine trying to back the vehicle out and and try to back into the street during rush hour to make that maneuver. It's a little precarious. So this really solves that problem by allowing someone that's egressing the property to be facing forward can then concentrate on the pedestrians as well as traffic, wait for a break and then, you know, get into the into the street. So though for for those reasons, I I think it it is a safety improvement, you know, particularly for this property. I know the concern of the board is always, you know, well, as everybody along South Harrison Street can come in and you know, now ask us for the circular driveway in the front yard to address this problem. But I think this property is a little bit unique in that it is the closest to the Hartley intersection. And and you really do get that traffic that backs up all the way in front of the driveway. So I think this one's a little unique versus other properties on the road. So I think that's a way that, you know, we could address the concern of any precedent that would be set here. I also think purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment is also promoted. I think this provides an aesthetically pleasing means to provide this additional means of access. I've talked to Mr. Pyle and and he's agreed that, you know, really to address that potential visual impact. If the rain garden doesn't go in that front portion, then he would agree to some low level landscaping to kind of soften that edge and address that appearance from from the road. So in terms of negative criteria impacts, I think there won't be any substantial impact from these reductions. So on the side yard setback, as I mentioned, the driveway is currently about a foot from the property line and we'll we'll widen that out to three feet. And again, it's not for the entire length of the driveway, it's just for the portion, you know, eighteen, twenty feet to allow that second vehicle to be parked in front of the garage. The drive, the house directly to our north, there are driveways on the north side of their property. So a lot of the activity on that side is is on the northern side of that property. So the two driveways are not next to each other. So in terms of any potential visual impact there, most of that activity on the neighboring lot is is on the north side. So we don't think it'll be a substantial impact there. And as far as the front yard parking setback, as I said, either the if the rain garden can't be positioned there, then Sir Pyle said he would agree to some landscaping to help mitigate that visual impact or potential visual impact from the front. Then as far as the intent purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, there's no specific rationale for the parking setbacks that's mentioned. But the general intent of these standards is to ensure that we have adequate separation between the parking areas and adjacent properties and also to limit the visibility of of parking from the street. So I think, given the limited expansion of the width of the driveway, the the three foot separation on that side is adequate. Again, the the center of activity on that parcel is away from that side of the property, so it it shouldn't be a substantial impact there. And then with the front yard setback, we can again offer to have some landscaping in the in the cutout there that will help to, you know, reduce that potential visual impact. So overall, I think, given the unique circumstances of this property, the location, you know, in proximity to the intersection, I I don't think there'll be any substantial impairment to the intent of those standards. I did just want to address, and I I think it's, you know, a question really for the board. So I I know, Mr. Chairman, you would agree with Mr. Floyd. Is is I I agree with Mr. Pyle in a sense that, you know, constructing a new driveway up the side and then creating the turnaround in the back will likely provide more impervious coverage than this solution. Is is that something that the board would like us to look at? Because I I kind of get the sense, you know, we have two members that have expressed some concerns with that. I'm I'm just wondering if anyone else has a similar concern? And if that's something that we need, or rather you would like us to look at as a possibility. I don't know that it works very well for the piles functionally, the, you know, the 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 garage is there today and is going to continue to function as a garage. That's where the existing driveway is. We really thought this was the best solution. You know, to help keep the impervious coverage to a limited area, we would have to construct a pretty substantial turnaround, you know, to to accommodate parking of at least two vehicles and then the ability to turn them around. So we we did honestly feel, and I'd spoken with Mr. Bridger about that option, Mr. Powell and I discussed it. And, you know, he thought better of it, just, you know, purely from an impervious coverage standpoint. We're allowed thirty six percent on this property. I don't, I don't know that we would get to thirty six percent, but you know, that was really our primary concern. And, you know, again, constructing a whole new driveway and parking area in the rear of the site versus the solution, so.
Well, I guess, do any of the board members have any comments on this? On on the potential of putting a drive on the side and providing a turnaround in any of the front or the rear?
I I think it's a valid thing to consider, especially because the garage, they're they're not going to park in it. And I I'm just concerned about all the the potential for many cars sitting in front of the house.
Anybody else have any concerns?
I'd like to ask a question out there.
I guess, Steve, you know, after listening, I still have the concern or or see that as an alternative. One of the things, and and I understand we won't get to with the front, the thirty six percent impervious coverage, but we're we're talking eighty percent of the front yard being impervious coverage under the proposal. I do, so I I I am wrestling with this. I in all the all the safety comments, I I accept, I agree with that. And it's, for me, that's not in debate, but whether a driveway on, as I talked about, is alternative and taking out the existing is still a valid alternative to me. And I think just the comment, it was said the garage still functions as a garage. I think the garage sits there as a garage, but it's not being used as a garage. So it's not functioning currently as a garage, in my opinion, but.
Mr. Kyle. I agree.
Mr. Kyle can say otherwise, but.
I have a a question partly addressed to to Michael Floyd. Is the objection of the front, the aesthetics that might be ameliorated by planting bushes around the interior of the circular drive or semi circular drive?
No, the, I mean, it 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 may be, but I look at it as with the zoning board and there's a zoning code and we look at variances. And if there was not an option, that's one thing. My concern is there is an option. That's a very basic sort of premise. Okay. So that that is really it. If there was no option, if there was, if the house was much closer to the the southbound, the south side line, that's a different story to me. So that's my answer.
Yeah, the board questions.
Is it even worth considering, Mr. and Mrs. Pyle, to maybe eliminate part of the existing driveway? So because as Mr. Floyd says, the garage is not really operating as a garage because you you don't intend to put a car into it because of the constraints of the garage. If you eliminated some of the existing driveway and just went with the loop, is is that at all something that could be considered or I don't know if the board has any thought about that?
I think that would force more cars in front of the in the front of the house. You'd be parking, the the cars would be more visible in instead of being off to the side.
That's true.
I think I think Mr. Kyle basically asked that we polled the board, correct me if I'm wrong, to get a feel for what everybody's concern is. But I think based on the discussion we have, several people have concerns. If you want to take these concerns into consideration and and study it and come back to us, that's your choice or we can consider the application as it exists now.
So I'd like to ask a question of the board, if I may.
Sure.
Am I understanding that you're concerned about a certain number of vehicles parking on the front law front of the house? Our intention is to be able to service, to park our two vehicles to the side and have service vehicles get in and out of the property. So a service vehicle may park in the loop or in the portion that I've indicated to the side as far away from the street as possible. But we're not intending to load this up with four or five vehicles parking overnight. We have two, we intend to vehicles, the ones that we own. My wife, well, we actually, yeah, two vehicles, right? So and that so it sounds to me like the concern is seeing cars in front of the house close to the street. Am I hearing that correctly?
Well, I think I think the concern and and other board members chime in here. I think the concern is the the amount of hardscape in the front and the potential to have a lot of cars in the front yard. I mean, as as Mr. Floyd mentioned, you know, you're you're way under the thirty six percent of impervious coverage allowed, but you have a disproportionate amount of it in the front yard. And and so it's and then Mr. Kyle asked if, you know, if other people had concerns. And I think other people do have concerns. So if it's something that you want to look at, that's fine if you if you you want to choose to move forward with what you propose. But I think the, at least what I hear is everybody's concerned about the amount of paving and the potential for a lot of cars in the front yard. I mean, a lot of vehicles in that front yard.
So just to be clear.
Excuse me, they they do, there are alternatives to that. And I think Mr. Floyd is right in that regard. If if there were no alternative alternatives, it'd be one thing, but there are alternatives.
Right, so just to be clear, is my understanding then that the alternative, as I'm imagining in my initial review of running the driveway to the back and having the turnaround and presumably the garage reconstructed in the back will actually increase the impervious cover, won't it?
It might be, but it's still gonna, it possibly is going to leave the front yard a little more open. I mean, it is. I mean, it is, I mean, it's a very nice house and, you know, it, but you're paving the entire, you know, you're paving a good percentage of the front yard.
Right.
Okay, so.
We do see a little bit.
All right. Well, I guess. All right. Well, I can take that under advice and we can look at it further. What would that mean? We would come back to you the next, in the next month and report back what we think.
Well, I think, I think you would. Study it amongst yourselves and Derek would just, they would amend their application. Derek, you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, they could amend it if they choose to revise it. They have to submit plans. And if any more variances get triggered, they'd have to renotice.
Okay.
Yeah, it would trigger variances because we'd be going up against the setbacks on the south side of the property, I suppose.
Yes.
I have a question for Karen. Is there any means to restrict? How the curved portion is used, like say no overnight parking? Or have some limit on that you couldn't have, you know, multiple cars parked there for, you know, a week or something? And even though the current owner has one idea in mind as to how that driveway is used, you know, what about future?
I think it would be very, very difficult to enforce, and I don't know who would be enforcing it. The police, I'm sure, would say it's private property. They're not going to enforce it. And that would mean the zoning officer would have to, you know, what, rely on anecdotal people saying. There's always cars parked in front of the house. I understand the concern. The other thing I wanted to point out is I know that there were some comments that perhaps landscaping can buffer this. But right now. Because there hasn't been any engineering testimony. I don't think it's entirely clear where the stormwater management facility would go. Might go in the front. If it does, then I'm not sure how there would be buffering included with it. So it seems to me that. And again, I don't know if the board, if the board ends up approving it. If that's something they want, who would, who would look at that? Or would you delegate, are you delegating that to the staff to decide? But if landscaping can go there. Because it's, you know, it can be accommodated along with a bio retention. Facility. Would the applicant come back to you? Because right now, they've explained, you know, they didn't want to invest too much money in the project, including bringing in engineer in at this stage and having them come tonight. But who would, you know, there's still unresolved questions, it seems to me, just with what's being proposed. If enough board members would like to see an alternative design or recommending to the applicant that they do that. Then that, that may dispense with the question of landscape and buffering. But.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
So the town really doesn't want structured, you know, dry wells as a stormwater management system. They would prefer that you have a bio retention basin or a rain garden, which does have vegetation in it. I mean, Mr. Paul, you might want to just engage an engineer to just see if the space in front, if the space on the side is enough to. To provide adequate stormwater, if there's enough, you know, land area for the impervious coverage you're at. You know, because there's not a lot in that front. You might need to. Cut that horseshoe down a little bit. Thirteen feet is a big, is a big driveway. The standard driveway length in most zones, in residential zones, is ten feet. Entering the property, it can get bigger. But, I mean, these are all things that I know you don't want to. Put a lot of, you know, assets into this project without, you know, feeling that it would go forward. But this might be something that you might need to just see. Does that area in the front work? Does the area in the side work? You're, you know, it's just something I would, I don't want to see if you did get approved and then you have to go do a stormwater management system and it doesn't work. You know, that's, that's the, the other side of the coin.
Well, I really appreciate these very thoughtful comments. I would just urge consideration for the stepwise idea here. The process to me is a little opaque as to what is really needed. I think the discussion here started on the parking on the front lawn. We've then, we've been now also into impervious surface and design and landscaping. All of these things can be considered. But I hope the board will understand that it's a significant financial outlay. We're about thirty-five hundred dollars into this already. We're talking now about a consulting engineer. That could be another four thousand dollars for you to get started. And I don't know which way the board wants to go on this. Other than I really appreciate that they're expressing concerns. I really would like to address those concerns. So this is a challenge for all of us, I think, in town. Because there are new regulations that are being put upon us as homeowners. This is a small property, not a large one. And we want to make, we want to make this, looking for the right balance here so that I can proceed in the expenditure of our resources. In the most purposeful, constructive way. So.
I don't think we're imposing new regulations on you. I think we're just expressing our concern to the proposal as it exists now. And, and, you know, there's been discussions of alternatives and, and. And you know, the concerns of the board members. And so I think it's, it's your decision. I think Derek's comment and Karen's comment on the runoff is very valid. Because obviously there are points on this, this proposal that most probably will, you know, that water will not get into the. Small circular area remaining in the front. And it's something that needs to be looked at.
All right. Well, but I didn't mean to say that you were imposing regulations. I'm just.
I understand.
Water regulations that we're all having to deal with.
Yeah.
They're very important. But they are burdensome in trying to get these projects up. All right. So it sounds like what we should do here is. Postpone here, if you would agree. And then we can reconsider and calibrate. If Mr. Bridger is available, perhaps I could speak to him further for more guidance. On what might be a good next step. And then figure out the right way to come back and approach this question.
Steve, did you want to open it to the public? I don't know if there's anybody here tonight who came to speak about the application.
I guess, I guess we can. I mean, there's, you know, if you do want to carry this, if you'd still like to have some public comment, that'd be fine. That would actually be a good idea.
Yeah, well, that, we're open book. We'd love to hear anybody's thoughts on this. That will.
Okay. Thanks, Karen. It was a very good point. All right. So let's do this. Let's open this up to the public now. If there's anybody out there that'd like to speak about this application, please raise your hand and you will be recognized. Anybody out there, Claudia?
No hands.
No hands. Okay.
Can I make, can I say something?
One second. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Say that again, please.
I think she said somebody raised their hand.
He wanted to make a comment.
Oh, no, I know. Steve wants to make a comment. I just want to make sure we're, is there somebody, I see somebody in the chat section. Is that someone wishing to make a comment?
Hello, hi, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. I just, are we talking about the THOFT project on thirty-three Green Street yet or no?
No, no.
Sorry, sorry. I'll come back. My apologies.
Okay, no problem. All right. If we don't hear, there's no one in the public who'd like to speak. Or is there someone else out there? I see, I keep seeing the number rising in the chat section. Is there anybody out there, Karen, Claudia?
No, no hands are raised.
Okay. All right. So I'll close the public portion. And Stephen, if you'd like to comment.
I'd just like to say, if you're going to reevaluate this whole project. It would be much more appealing to me if you really had just a simple loop in the front. Not a whole paved front yard. So I just. Say that.
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Pile, are you looking to come back in a month or do you want additional time to?
No.
Look at your options.
Well, I would like to schedule in a month. Time is money, right? So we would like to move it along if possible. So, or if you want, I can determine what will be required to research this to the board satisfaction. And then revert to Claudia with a request for next month or the month thereafter.
The reason I ask is because if we can give you a date certain tonight, then you will not need to renotice. If we adjourn, if we adjourn the hearing tonight, with no idea when you're coming back. Then we're going to have to ask you to renotice all your neighbors again and put a notice in the paper.
All right. So next month. Next month.
Derek, would that work for the agenda? Is it a, Derek?
Agenda is full, every meeting for the next two to three months. I mean, if you're sure that, no, I mean, I'm serious. You have to get an engineer, I think, or at least have a conversation. If that's enough time, then if it's not, then I would go to October.
Okay. Well, let me just, let me just dialogue with my wife. I think we're going to need getting an engineer contracted research and so on. This takes some time. So I think we have to go to October.
Okay, I thought you just talked.
So. I think to give her, to make this very relaxed, because there are a lot of details here. I think October is a better timeframe. For us to come back. Now, it does raise the question, we do have to do something with the existing driveway because it's in decrepit shape. So can I think out loud with you? Maybe I could break this thing into two phases where we could do the first phase simply for the driveway on the right. To, so we can get that repaved. We have water entering the basement of the house because of the decrepit condition of the driveway. We have to attend to that as a structural issue. So is that a way that we could also conceive of that without upsetting things too much or requiring renoting all the rest?
Now, what are you specifically talking about on the existing driveway side?
So there are two aspects of this project. One is the widening of the existing driveway to accommodate the two cars.
Yes.
And the other is to do the loop. So phase one might be the resurfacing and repair of the existing driveway. The expansion. And then the loop. But I guess that would require two separate approvals, wouldn't it?
Well, if you're going to just repave the existing driveway without any modification, you wouldn't need our permission.
Yeah. But if I repave, I have to, I have to take into account the expansion I'm seeking.
Now you have to, you can only repave what is there now.
Yep.
And so it's, right. So I'm trying to be economical in the way we think of it. So maybe this, all right, let's reserve October. Perhaps I can discuss further with Mr. Bridger and get more clear guidance on this. So as not to take up more of the board's time tonight. But I just want to say, I really appreciate all the comments and thoughts. It is a difficult project. We were aware of that going in. So let us revert, let us review and revert.
Eric, what is the date in October for the meeting?
Seven, ten twenty-seven.
Thank you.
October twenty-seven?
Yes.
Okay, so even though there was no one who wanted to comment, we'll just make it clear this application is getting carried now to October twenty-seventh. Okay.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Okay. Our next case is thirty-three Green Street. Block seventeen point oh-two, lot one oh-seven in the R four zone in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. And it carries the case number Z twenty-one dash oh twenty-nine. Karen, is everything on the notices?
The noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Derek, do you want to summarize?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. Kirsten Thoth and Ted Nadeau are the owners and applicants of thirty-three Green Street, which is located in the R four zone in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. They're seeking a C one variance to convert a shed roof to a gable roof and exception to the required smaller and combined side yard setbacks. And the height to setback ratio, the subject property is located. In the Witherspoon Jackson District and reviewed by the HPC as required. Elizabeth's here, so I think she'll read her memo after I finish this. The subject property is not complying with regard to lot area requirement, six thousand square feet. The existing is twenty-seven hundred square feet. The lot width requirement is sixty. The existing is thirty feet. And the lot depth requirement is one hundred feet and the existing is sixty feet. The subject property itself is not compliant with respect to the following bulk requirements. The height to setback requirement is three to one. The existing is eighteen point three to one. And a larger side yard setback requirement is eight. The existing is one point one. The combined side yard requirement is twelve. The existing is nine point six feet. And the combined is requirements twenty and the existing is ten point seven feet. The applicant is proposing to rehabilitate the property. And the shed roof is supposed to demolish and replaced with a gable roof. And then we'll require the following variances. Really an increase in the degree of noncompliance because the roof's just getting raised up a little bit. So the height to setback requirement is three to one. The existing will be eighteen point three to one. The smaller side yard setback. Requirements eight, the existing will be one to one, but it's slightly increased because the roof goes up. And the same with a larger side yard setback of twelve feet, the existing is nine point six. And the combined side yard setback of twenty feet, the existing is ten point seven feet. Due to a lot of constraints, the applicant is requesting consideration under the C one variance. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them. If not, I would like to hand it over to Elizabeth Kim. She will address the Historic Preservation Commission's review of the application.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth will just swear you in. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
So the HPC had reviewed this application and they really had no objections to anything that the applicant was proposing. They had a minor demolition of the rear foundation and possibly some exterior walls on that small addition in the rear. Which they intend to build the second floor on. And the HPC felt that was appropriate. It was in the back of the building and the material. And the height would still remain no higher than the existing height of the roofline in the front. And as far as the existing flat roof, which the applicant intends to raise a roofline to a gable roof. They also felt that they had no objection to this. They felt all the improvements that the applicant was proposing. In addition to window replacements. And other material they felt was appropriate for the property. And within the historic district, they felt that it would make the appearance compatible to the district and to the neighborhood. And they had no objections. They did have a few recommendations. Which they had listed at the end of the memo, and I'm just going to go through them. The applicant should consider planting a new street tree in the public right of way space between the existing tree trees on adjoining properties. The applicant should be encouraged to explore the removal of existing aluminum siding and to restore, replace the wooden clappard siding on the existing house. And the applicant should be encouraged to protect the interior of the front porch when porch screens are in use. So one of the items within the application was that the applicant wanted to take. The opportunity to remove the. The pane windows on the porch and construct some screen windows so that could be used during the season. And the only concern the HPC had was that the openness might. Create an opportunity for moisture to get onto the porch. But I think that the applicant did address that, and I think that they will talk about that tonight. If there's any questions from the board, I'm available to answer any of those. Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Kim? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. The applicant can begin.
Okay, Thoth, let me just swear you in. You swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen with you, which is the drawings that you all have. In front of you, which were also used for the historic preservation. application. So basically, this is the house on the site. And this little portion back here is a one-story addition that was done at some point in the past that has a shed roof on it. And as of right, I'm able to put a second floor on that per our zoning ordinance, which is what I'm intending to do. And when I started working on the drawings, realized that if I or when I put a second floor on this portion, this portion of the building, which has a shed roof that is, that's essentially flat, that runs from here, the bottom of the gable down to the back, is so short that it creates a problem with the roof back here. And I can show you that. I will skip over all of this stuff, but I'm happy to return to it just to show you in section or in elevation. If you're looking at the side of the building, this is the front and this is the gable on the front. This is the back part that's going to be an addition as of right. And this is ideally what I want to do with the roof in the back, which is the pitch. Little gable roof here so that we can shed water. And the problem is that if I have this roof here and I keep the existing roof at this level that it's at, it creates a big water problem behind the gable on the new portion. So what I'm proposing to do is to build a new roof on the center portion and have it, its peak match the gable at the front of the house. And then the rear addition would have a gable roof that would virtue the fact that it's much less wide than the rest of the house. It would be shorter even than the, than the gable in the middle of the roof. And the reason for the variances, I can show you on this drawing. So this is the floor plate of the house. And you can see with these dash lines here, these are the setbacks. So they are almost wholly inside the house because the lot is thirty feet wide and the house is eighteen foot three. So this portion of the second floor right in here and right over here, if I change the roof line at all, triggers the need for a zoning variance. And those would be the right side yard here, the left side yard here. And if you look at the section, the building height to setback ratio, because the house is very tied up against our neighboring property. It was Andrea who was on this call. You can see that the allowable four point five to one building height to setback ratio is this red line here. But the house actually is here right now. And I'm not increasing that building height to setback ratio. But just by virtue of changing the roof, it, it triggers the need for a variance there. I'm happy to show you pictures of other neighboring properties, which, you know, most of which have peaked roofs. I think that doing a gabled roof across in the middle of the house is a really typical form for the neighborhood. And so I think that it actually has an improvement to the appearance of the house. And as a happy byproduct of it, the current ceiling heights on the second floor of this house are six foot eleven, which is well below code. So it would be, it would allow me to have a seven foot six ceiling in the second floor. However, the reason for this is really the second, the rear addition on the back. And just as an aside, if I were to not do, if I were to keep the roof as is in the center portion and just carry it down the back here, I end up with ceilings that are about six foot three at this rear wall in the back. I mean, basically, this is, it's, it's not nearly to code, which would be seven foot six. And that's, that's essentially it. I'm happy to answer any questions. I could go through the drawings one by one. There's a lot of stuff in here for historic preservation that may or may not be of interest to the zoning board.
Ms. Thoth, a couple of quick questions. You're a licensed architect in New Jersey, correct?
Yes, I am.
And these, you prepared these plans that you've been referencing and you're, you, you're the project architect, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And would you like, I don't know how many sheets you have here tonight. Do you want them all collectively to be your exhibit A1? That way, if you keep referring to it tonight, we'll have them all on the record. Okay.
Yes, there's sixteen. That's staying on through day sixteen.
Okay, great.
Karen, I don't think there's any reason to qualify Kirsten as an expert. She's the applicant.
Correct. I agree.
And she's tested, but she has testified before this board numerous times.
That is correct.
I don't know if it's relevant, but maybe you're interested that I'm also intending to remove the aluminum siding on the building. I know that doesn't have anything to do with the zoning board. But my plan is to remove the aluminum siding. My plan is to match the, the trim and the siding that I found that exists on the front porch, which I believe is on the rest of the house because it's underneath the siding on the side. And basically, do my best to restore the outside of the house to something closer to what it looked like when it was built. So my, my intentions are to make it as compatible with the historic nature of the neighborhood as possible.
Very nice.
Ms. Thoth, are the HPC conditions, are their recommendations acceptable to you? Or did you want to speak to them?
I had, well, I have a question about where the street tree would go. Because in looking at, I think it may be evident from these pictures. So this is thirty-three green right here. This is thirty-one green. And I, I think you can see that just in front of thirty-one green is, is a large tree right in front of their porch. And actually Andrea is on the call and I wish she could speak to that. But so there's this portion of right of way right here in front of the house. And there's additionally a tree right on the other side of the driveway. So I'm not sure what the appropriate spacing is for street trees. I'm happy to put in, I love trees. And this house faces south. And, you know, part of my thinking about putting screens in the porch was because it turns into a broiler in the summertime. So a tree would be great. I just want to make sure that it's appropriately sized. So I guess I need some guidance from the arborist on what that should be.
Would you be amenable to a condition that says in consultation with the municipal arborist, the applicant shall, you know, try to plant a, a street tree?
Yep.
He can give you.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. And then the request about the spoons, it, it made me think that it was a good idea to, to be able to protect the porch in the rain because it actually does have a really nice floor and it kind of functions as an interior space. And it made me wonder whether my idea was not a good idea. And I have to confess that I have not figured out what a better idea would be. So that's where I am with that. I, I, I'm open to suggestions. I've had some conversations with my contractor about different kinds of hardware one could use. There's some complicated old hardware that is probably prohibitively expensive, to be honest. But so it may be that maybe it just needs to stay the way it is and be treated as indoor space. And my, my pipe dream of having it be is not achievable.
Could I ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
Regarding that. And so I, I think it's a great opportunity to be able to use that space because as you said, it probably does get very hot since it's southern faced.
Yeah.
You know, one of the, the characters of the neighborhood was the, the use of the porches. Is there, is there, are you opposed? Because I think the way that operates right now, the windows open inward towards the porch. Is that correct?
Right, they do.
Is there an opportunity for you to actually place a screen, construct a screen that you would have normally done on the inside? And you were planning to remove that existing glass panel? Can you keep that as is and perhaps construct something that could go in seasonally on the outside?
That's the challenging old hardware that I was referring to. Apparently, if you flip it so that the, the window can open as a casement to the outside and have a screen on the inside, then you need some piece of hardware that, that allows you to unlatch and latch the window from inside of the screen. And so I don't fully understand it. I, I mean, I'm, I, I'm happy to, you know, take whatever. I, I could just end up not changing it. But if there's advice about particular types of hardware or how to do this, I'm certainly interested in hearing it.
I appreciate you considering that.
Okay, are you done testifying?
I don't remember whether there were any other comments from the Historic Preservation Committee that I should be.
Those were the only three.
Okay.
I think I said something about two of them, tree and what was the third?
The tree, the screening and the siding.
Oh, okay. Yes. Yeah, my intention is to remove that siding as soon as I can.
Okay. Any other witnesses or view it?
I'm done.
Yeah, you're done?
I'm done.
Okay, you, you can continue. I'm just asking.
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm happy to be done.
Okay, all right.
I should stop sharing my screen. Should I stop sharing my screen so that?
Or why not? Do any of the board members have any questions of the applicant right now before we open it up to the public?
Steve, before you open it to the public, just I have a quick question from Ms. Thoth. I'm assuming that the basis for your variances is that it's preexisting and the, the existing conditions of the house?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, the narrowness of the lot that puts the most of the house into the setbacks. And, and yeah, I mean, that's it really, right?
Okay, Karen, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. I will open this up to the public for comment. If anybody does have any comments, please raise your hand and you will be recognized. Claudia?
Here's somebody.
I see one person on the screen who commented, asked the question if this was thirty-three green during the last half, during the last hearing.
Yep, she's on.
Okay, I, I can, can I, is it okay to go?
Yeah, could you, could you first give us your address, ma'am, and your name?
Sure, Andrea Wodysinska, thirty-one Green Street. I, I'm the building right next door.
All right, and we're just going to swear you in. Just swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, Kirsten.
Hi, Andrea.
Hi, how you doing? Just quick question. Just because the, the two homes are so close together. What's the plan with the, with like, how the alley is going to work as far as water drainage? Right now, it's just like a jumble of like lots of rocks. And so I'm here with my husband. I'm sorry, he's a little off screen, but so we're just curious about that.
Yeah. So my plan was to put a gutter alongside of the, the new portion of the roof where the gable will come down toward the alley and then direct it to the back. And probably, well, one of two things. There seems to be an underwater, an underground storm drain system, though I'm not sure how well it works. So connecting into that is a possibility. The other option is to do a stormwater planter to capture the water, slow it down and then send it to the back of the yard. But the, the plan would not be to be putting any water into that alley. It already has, it already has some water actually from your toes spout and it does not need anymore.
It's, no, I know. I have, no, we're actually wanting, we're getting that all repaired. So I just, I'm curious. Where, where would the planter be?
In the back. So there's, there, you know, the house here, let me, let me share the screen again rather than talking with my hands. Yeah. So let me go to the site. So this is where, this is where a gutter would be. And then this is open space here.
Right.
So I'd be sending it back in this direction.
Cool.
Away from your house.
Yeah. And I'm getting that gutter repaired. And my only other question was if the zoning board at all knew anything about timing of when everything is starting? Just because to the other side of our house is twenty-nine Green Street, which you will know was just razed. And so are both projects just going to go forward, like go simultaneously?
Well, I could speak to mine. We ended up renting to somebody for the year. So he's got it rented through, I think, the end of next summer. I don't think that we're going to be doing anything except maybe if I can get that siding off with him in the house, I might do that. But, but the rest of it is going to wait until next fall. I haven't heard anything from twenty-nine Green Street about what their schedule is. So I can't speak to them.
Thank you so much. I have no other questions.
I have a question of Derek. If, if the applicant chooses to wait until next year to do this today, how long will the, the, if we do approve it, how long will that be in effect until they have to come back to us?
The approval is good for a year from the date of publication of the resolution and findings of fact. And Kirsten can get a building permit during that period of time and she gets another year. And if she's still working on it, she gets another year. So she should be okay with that time period.
Okay, as long as you're comfortable with that, Kirsten, then we're cool.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Okay. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to comment on this application?
There are no hands.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion of the comments and go into executive session. Are there comments from the board on this application? Anyone? I actually think it's, it's a well thought out scheme. And I think it'll be a benefit to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I agree. I think it's very well thought out and very attractive.
Yeah. Okay. If there are no other comments in the board of someone who would like to make a motion?
So moved.
You're moving to approve, I assume?
Second.
Okay.
So moved to approve.
Very good. Okay, Derek, did you want to say something?
Wanted to note the conditions in the Historic Preservation Commission's memo about the tree. And I don't know what the screening, Kirsten, how to speak to that.
I, I'm not, I mean, I, I think we just say that.
So you'll, you'll agree to remove the aluminum siding?
Yeah, I'll agree to move. Want to take it off with my bare hands.
The only other. Then the, uh, the only other condition would be the tree. And then the interior protection when the screens are in use, I think she can do some research and deal with that. It doesn't have to be a condition.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are the conditions to the resolution. Okay, um, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Are there any other comments on the motion? Okay, Claudia?
Um, who second the motion?
Uh, Mr. Stein.
Thank you.
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
I know, what is it doing? Yes. Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
German Goen?
Yes. Thank you.
Question, when, when did, Harlan, when did you join the meeting? Were you here for this application?
I was here for, I heard, um, I joined midway through the driveway application. I've heard this application in entirety.
Okay, great, thank you.
Joining at seven forty-five.
Okay.
I joined at seven forty-five according to.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to recuse myself from the next application and turn the gavel over to Mr. Floyd.
Okay. I guess Claudia could uh, we bring in the team for the Bun Drive, so Mr. Letitia and.
Yes. They're all here.
They're all here? Are they, they're on now?
Yes.
Chairman Floyd, could we take a minute? Could we take two minutes?
Sure. Let's take five minutes, if that's okay. I'm not sure this would be too long. About five-minute break.
Thank you, Michael.
Be back at nine thirty or so. Hey Harlan? Harlan?
Yeah.
Are you, are you, is your visual not a, not available? You on your phone or?
I'm on my, I'm on the phone.
Oh, okay, thanks. This one. Steve's back. So waiting for Bernice and Steve. Well, Steve's not here, excuse me. Bernice, we're waiting for. Bernice, are you there? Hello, Bernice. Okay, I think we're ready to start then. Uh, this application is Bun Drive, block forty-four oh one, lot two, zone AH four. It's an application of Princeton Community Village Associates LP. Uh, classification of a minor site plan with a D one use variance. So, well, we have Derek, you want to present uh, your report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Eric, before you begin, I'll just note that the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you, Karen. As uh, Michael indicated, the board is gonna hear the application of Princeton Community Village Associates LP. They have filed a use variance and site plan, related site plan with the zoning board um, to permit a childcare center in exception to the permitted uses in the AH four zone. Subject site is lot two, block forty-four oh one. Um, it's uh, the Princeton Community Village. It's a thirty-five point seven acre lot. It's bounded to north by Bun Drive, the southwest by an unimproved municipal right-of-way, west by property owned by the DNR Greenway. And the northeast by Herrentown Woods. Hilltop Park is across the street from the Bun Drive complex. Uh, the existing Princeton Community Village is a hundred percent affordable housing project and was established in nineteen seventy-five and consists of two hundred thirty-nine residential units. The existing residential complex includes seventy-one one-bedroom units, hundred sixty-eight two, three, and four-bedroom units, and a surface parking lot exists containing four hundred fifteen parking spaces. The site also includes a clubhouse, uh, which serves the needs of the community. Site was recently zoned from the OR one or Office Research One Zone um, in twenty twenty to the AH four zone. Um, the OR one zone did not permit the a hundred percent affordable housing project. The AH four zone now permits this project. Uh, just a little bit of history, recently, the project uh, received site plan approval from the planning board uh, to construct a three-story mid-rise apartment consisting of twenty-five affordable rental units within the existing Princeton Community Village. The building will be sited on the east end at the end of Sassa Fresh Row and the site improvements include uh, new reconfigured parking lot, banked parking, its community amenities, landscaping, and stormwater management facilities. We're, we're hearing the, the reason they're here tonight before us, they're seeking approval to permit um, the Marcy Crimmens Learning Center to operate a preschool serving low and moderate income households during the day. The center would be located in a space that has been utilized as an after-school program, which has operated for decades, serving elementary school-aged children from Princeton Community Village and other Princeton Affordable Housing communities. There's no record of approval for this after-school program and the applicant is here tonight to seek a use variance approval. Um, and they submitted the required minor site plan. There are no site plan improvements associated with this application. Uh, the only work that will take place is a reconfiguration of one of the existing bathrooms, so that it is ADA compliant. So the subject's located in the AH four zone, as I indicated earlier, and the, the proposed use is not a permitted use in that zone. So they're seeking a uh, NJSA forty comma fifty-five D dash seventy, D one variance. Um, as the board is aware, uh, variance under uh, this section requires at least five affirmative votes of the board. No other variance or relief may be granted under the terms of this section unless um, it, the, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, it will not in a substantially impair the, the intent of the zoning plan or the zoning ordinance. And that's a brief uh, synopsis uh, of the application. If you have any questions, um, we just would like to act, the applicant, just to briefly discuss how, you know, kids are dropped off at the site. I mean, this has been going on for years, but we just, you know, want to make sure that uh, you know, we discuss that and it's taken care of sa- in a safe manner. Um, and that's it. If I, you have any questions, I'd be glad to address it.
Any questions uh, for Mr. Bridger? I guess, I, I have one question. Um, Derek, especially seeing as it just got made a, you know, affordable housing number four that we zoned. When all our affordable housing sites, you know, there's, there's, almost all projects have community centers and, you know, in their, in their uh, projects. Is these uses of a learning center, I can understand daycare at the, right now, do any of the affordable housing zones?
I believe the uh, the Clay's Learning Center uh, at Princeton Community Housing has approval. Um, I'm not aware of any other uh, smaller, you know, daycares like this. But it's odd because it is a permitted use if it was a non-residential business in a non-residential zone, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant my question, like going forward, the town's gonna build all these affordable housing projects.
No, good, good point. Now, that's something we should consider.
I think so.
That might be something that we would like to put in our end-of-the-year report, you know?
Okay.
It's a good, it's an excellent suggestion, Michael.
Yeah. All right, I'd like to uh, give it over to Mr. Letitia, please.
For.
And you can introduce your team and get them sworn in. Thank you.
Will do. Uh, good evening, uh, members of the board. Tom, Letizia attorney with Troutman Pepper representing Princeton Community Village, uh, LP. Um, I'll just provide some brief remarks and then I'll, I'm gonna turn it over to uh, uh, two individuals who will uh, present the application, uh, Mr. Ed Tricely and Ms. Kate Beck from Princeton Family YMCA. So, just a little bit of background, and Derek has covered uh, most of this, but just so uh, you get a, a sense of, of what the proposed use uh, is for this uh, application. So as noted by Mr. Bridger, uh, you know, PCV is a housing development off of Bun Drive uh, across from Hilltop Park. It opened in the nineteen seventies and contains two hundred thirty-nine rental units, all of which are affordable units. And it's identified as lot two and block forty-four oh one on the Princeton tax map. And again, as noted by Mr. Bridger, up until last year, the site was zoned, oh, OR one. And then in July of last year, the zoning was changed to affordable housing zone four in recognition of the existing affordable housing community. So this application requests a use variance and minor site plan approval in connection with the use of approximately eighteen hundred square feet of space located at twenty B Juniper Row uh, within the community for both childcare and educational purposes, which are not specifically permitted in the AH four zone district, but hopefully with, uh, as noted by Mr. Floyd, perhaps uh, this oversight will be corrected in this zone and others. Uh, specifically, the application requests approvals to use this space, which is named the Marcy Crimmens Learning Center uh, during the school day as a free preschool for up to fifteen students uh, from uh, underprivileged uh, backgrounds, both from PCV as well as similar Princeton neighborhoods, and in the afternoon for an after-school program for children from uh, these same neighborhoods. Although, excuse me, technically, this is a use variance, we believe this is not a major request because as Mr. Derek indicated, the use has basically operated at this site as an after-school program for decades without any incident. Ironically, the after-school childcare center was permitted in the OR one zone pursuant to the municipal land use law, which provides that childcare centers shall be permitted, a permitted use in all non-residential districts. So, because of the rezoning, uh, that we're not allowed to take advantage of that provision. Furthermore, from the use variance perspective, the proposed school and childcare uses are expressly defined under the municipal land use law as inherently beneficial uses and therefore are deemed to automatically meet the positive or special reasons tests for use variance. That leaves just the negative criteria of showing no substantial detriment to the public good and no substantial impairment to the intent and purposes of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. And I point out for the board that the proposed use does promote the first land use goal of your master plan, which states as follows, maintain a balanced community that offers a mix of land uses while providing appropriately scaled community infrastructure and services. So as far as the site plan aspects, Miss, Mr. Bridger confirmed there are no exterior changes. So therefore, there's really no site plan uh, review here. And any, um, any of the new improvements are interior and that relates to uh, the bathroom renovation for ADA compliance. A question was raised about four existing signs uh, for the learning center, which will remain as is. These signs are installed. Uh, were installed when the property was uh, under the OR one zoning. Uh, we would argue that based on the area, the design, and the content of the signs, they would be considered um, restricted signs under the sign ordinance, which could be a restricted signs under the sign ordinance, which could be approved and permitted without further review. However, to be conservative, we did include within our notice possible sign variances if the board determines that they are required for, for the signs. So in summary, we believe what you will hear this evening will clearly show that the variance criteria of the municipal land use law is satisfied such that the zoning board can grant approval. So unless there's some questions for me, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tricelli.
Thank you, Tom.
I need to swear you in, Mr. Tricelli. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Floyd and members of the zoning board. I'd also like to take the opportunity to introduce my partner in this project. Kate Beck from, who is the CEO of the Princeton Family YMCA. So Ms. Casey, if you want to swear her into.
Yeah, where, where is Ms. Beck? Is she, do we see her?
Yeah, she's right in the center of my screen. I don't know if you see her waving.
Yeah, I'm looking. There you are. All right. Ms. Beck, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Tricelli, you are the executive director of Princeton Community Housing, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom. I will assume that most of you have the opportunity to review the information that we forwarded to you prior to the meeting. So I, what I'd like to do is share my screen and just briefly walk through Princeton Community Village, sort of the context of this project. Is everyone seeing my screen, I hope?
Yes.
Okay, great. So just to reiterate, this, this learning center is something that has been in place for many, many years. And it precedes my time at Princeton Community Housing, but it's always been, for as long as I've been with Princeton Community Housing, a strong partnership between the YMCA and Princeton Community Housing to provide an after-school program for many, many years. And now, as Kate will explain, we're going to be looking at expanding the use of the space to provide a daycare program as well. And again, both of these programs are fully licensed by the state, and Kate will again talk about that a little bit. Again, I'm just going to briefly go through this because I think most of you know where PCV is, but this is just a quick little context map. It's Princeton Community Village is across from Hilltop Park. And again, the learning center is located on Juniper Row. This is just a quick courtesy of Google, a quick aerial shot of Princeton Community Village. And you can see it's a wonderful location. It's very much a mature community in many respects, and it's really a wonderful place to live. Very proud of it. This is just a couple of context photos, so you again can get a sense of how the buildings relate to the landscape and how parking and, and I'm sorry, how buildings generally in these neighborhoods frame open space and parking. Parking is very important to the residents at PCV. But it's, as I mentioned before, very much a community where people look out for one another. And that's in some respects unusual for today. But it is a community where people do take the time to look out for their neighbors. Just kind of zeroing in on the Juniper Row neighborhood. These are some photos of the actual neighborhood where the learning center is. This portion here, I'll make this a little bigger. This portion of the building here, the actual lower level of this building here is where the learning center is located. And these are photos along the way here from the main Carl Light Boulevard, which comes off of Bun Drive. And then Juniper Row works its way down toward these buildings where the learning center is. So these photos illustrate the signage that we mentioned and the character of the walkway that goes to the learning center, which is down in this corner here. And you can see again the signage. Parking is ample, guest parking is ample, and Kate will talk shortly about how the bus leaves students off. So I'm going to go to another drawing, but I wanted to make sure that if anyone had any questions before I do that, I can certainly take those at the moment. If not, I'll go to another, another drawing. Okay, is everyone seeing a survey, property survey?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a.
And Ed, just to have the record clear.
Yes.
Ms. Casey, I think the first set of documents, we can make that A one.
Okay.
And then this one will be A two.
Okay.
All right, this is a plan of survey, correct, Ed?
Correct. Yes, I apologize. I should have mentioned that. I'm going to zoom in on a portion of this. This is a little clearer depiction again of the existing conditions at Princeton Community Village. And again, my cursor is going along Bun Drive here, sort of diagonally. And then here's Carl Light Boulevard. And then Juniper Row coming down this way, and then the learning center is existing in this building. So I think I'm going to turn it over to Kate here to talk a little bit about how students come and go and how it's a safe process, a process in terms of folks getting in and out of the learning centers, okay?
Sure. Thanks, Ed.
Sure.
So historically with the Princeton Young Achievers Program, which is the after-school program that's for children enrolled in grades K to five, which we've historically been running here at PCV, as, as was mentioned before, for decades. And then the YMCA has been providing, has been operating the program since two thousand and eleven. We, a school bus arrives around three thirty-ish, depending on the day. And we'll drop the students off where Ed is noting the cursor there. Our teachers from PYA meet the bus and they walk the children down to the center. And then in, at pickup time, their parents come and collect them, their parents and caregivers. So they sign them out at that point. So that's, it's, it's very, it's always worked very well. And we've had no issues in my experience. It's worked very smoothly.
Yes, and I will echo that. We, knock on wood, have not have any, have had any issues at all over the top, ten years that I've been with PCH.
And Ed or Kate, in terms of parents who may drive their children to drop them off, where would they park?
Right, so, so this area here, this parking area that's sort of concentric with the, the Carl Light Boulevard, this is all open for parking by guests and visitors. So parents could drop off or park and drop off their children in this location and then follow the same route down to the learning center.
And, and during the day, the preschoolers will be ages three and four. So just as at any childcare center, parents will park and then walk their children down to the center and sign them in and do the same thing at sign out. And that's limited to the fifteen students, as Tom mentioned.
Right. Okay, are there any other questions on this drawing? Okay, if the board would like, I can go back to another, go back to the first exhibit and show a quick plan and photographs of the learning center itself. Would, would the board like to see that? Okay, I'll do it anyway because I'm not really sure.
I'm very proud of it, so please share it.
Yeah, I can't see everybody's face, so maybe people are saying yes, I'm not seeing it. But this is part of Exhibit A. So this is the learning center, and let me just zoom out a little bit. So here on the right is a plan drafted by our architect. And really, everything that you're seeing in the plan is existing. The thing, or I shouldn't say the thing, the renovations or modifications we're going to make, as, as Mr. Bridger mentioned, is to this one restroom. We're making it slightly larger to accommodate accessible access and use. But otherwise, the space is, as you see in the photographs, it's, it's really a wonderful environment. And Kate and her team have really helped to make it a welcoming environment and a very strong educational environment. So Kate, I'll let you talk a little bit more about that.
Sure, sure. So we're very excited about this expansion of the universal preschool. We, as Ed mentioned, we've been working together as organizations for a long time, predating both Ed and me. But Ed and I have worked closely now for the ten years that Ed's been at PCH. So the YMCA took over the Princeton Young Achievers Program in two thousand and eleven. Up until that time, it had operated as nonprofit on its own. It ran into some financial challenges after the downturn of two thousand and eight. And the superintendent of schools at that time contacted me and asked if there was anything we could do with the Y to help. Fortunately, my board, despite our not even, well, precarious would be a generous term of our financial situation at the time as well, just felt though that it really was just moral imperative that we keep this program going. The Crimmens Center is one of three learning sites that we operate. We have this one here. We run the Pennell Learning Center over on Clay Street. And then we also, for many years, which predated me, there was a learning center over at Reading Circle. But that's now actually operated out of Littlebrook Elementary School, where the students who live in Reading Circle attend. So the program continues to this day. It was founded in nineteen ninety-three by Princeton educators, so the school district is another critical partner in all of this. So about a year ago, we were approached by the Princeton Public Schools because they have been very eager to offer universal preschool, free preschool in Princeton. And the state has made that an opportunity for school districts that opt in. But the challenge that the school district has had is just they're limited in space in the schools. So they first approached the YWCA, who agreed to launch three classrooms at their childcare center over on our campus at fifty-nine Paul Robeson. And then the school district contacted us and just thought the Crimmens Center would be an ideal location for another preschool center. So that's what got us, set us down this path. And I think that Ed and I immediately thought that would be a wonderful enhancement, and Ed's board was delighted. And this will be a wonderful opportunity for children and their families who reside in Princeton Community Village and Princeton Community Housing. Housing. So we're, we're thrilled. We think it will be a wonderful enhancement. And as Ed mentioned, these are all licensed. We take care of that through the YMCA. We, all of our after-school and childcare programs are licensed by the state. So there's a rigorous process that we undergo every year. And we were, and we're also very collaborative, and this is a great example of that kind of collaboration that's very successful.
That completes our presentation. So we're, all of us are available for questions.
So anyone have questions for Kate Beck or for Ed Tricelli? What, what do you anticipate your capacity will be for daycare?
For the preschool program. Yeah, the, for the three and four-year-olds, it's limited to fifteen children, and we expect it to be the fifteen. It may be fewer. It might be fourteen. The school district actually is the one, they enroll children in the program. And I should mention that the teacher is actually, while the teacher is in fact a YMCA employee, she is a certified teacher that will work with the school district teachers. So following the same, and will be using this, their curriculum, et cetera.
So that's, that's the preschool and, and the after-school learning.
We're, we're.
Fifteen also?
No, there, we're actually licensed. The ratios differ for the older students. So we can serve up to, I think that center is licensed for up to twenty-seven. But we're never at that number. We're closer, you know, closer to around sixteen, seventeen typically. The state is the, makes the, establishes the ratios, and they, they're the ones that give us the capacity based on our square footage.
Anyone else have questions? No? Then I guess, Claudia, anyone in the public out there? We can open up public session. If there's any people from the public, could you raise your hand?
There is no, no hands, sir.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And any summation from the applicant? Is that it?
That's it, Mr. Chairman. I think, you know, our application speaks for itself.
Yeah. Okay. Executive session, any comments from board members?
Yes, Michael, I'd like to make a comment. And that is, this, you know, in my mind, a wonderful project. That's existed for decades, and the expansion is going to serve an important community need. And in fact, if we were to deny this, it would be a major slap in the face of all sorts of projects that are going forward and will continue to go forward. So I'd just like to make that comment.
Any other comments? I have a quick question for Derek, I guess. It's for the use variance. Now, there was some mention of a possible need for, for sign approval, restricted sign theory. Is, is there any need for that?
I mean, the signs are there. They can, they comport with a restricted sign size. The applicant did notice in their notice for any variances. I think it's a good housekeeping thing to just approve the sign so that, I mean, they're needed. You can see that just by getting off of that location, you need a wayfinding to get to the daycare center. So I would just, if the board feels comfortable approving a variance for this existing signs, I would suggest they do that.
Okay. Can I get a, a motion to approve the use variance and sign, sign variance?
Go move. Stein.
Second?
All second.
Okay, you can call the vote?
You muted.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Is there ten on bomb?
Yes.
Ten?
Yes.
So Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Floyd?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
So it is approved?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Thank you very, very much.
Good luck. It's great program.
Right. Take care.
Any?
All right.
That's the end of our agenda. Any other business or comments or? Then get a motion to adjourn? Sorry, Donna, you raise your hand?
Motion to adjourn.
Get a second?
So, well done, Michael.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Good job.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael.
Yep.